Hafte day, everyone. Thank you for being here. The Office of Senator Telenia Cruz Nelson will now convene for this public hearing. Today is Tuesday, September 6, 2022, and it is currently 4:10 in the afternoon. For the record, in accordance with the open government law, public notices were sent out via email to all senators, stakeholders, and the Guam Daily Post on Monday, August 29, 2022, and again on Sunday, September 4, 2022. Notice of today's hearing was also available on the Guam Legislature's website. Joining me today for the hearing is Senator Tony Ada, Senators Telo Tid agree, and Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you for joining us today, Senators. Before we proceed with the public hearings, the legislature has general rules of conduct that must be met, and all must abide by these rules of conduct and quality assurance standards. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking, and please state your name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Individuals speaking shall only use respectful and professional language and conduct. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal from a hearing of a committee of subcommittee of any person who is not a member of Ilisatornguahan, and if else, to observe proper decorum pursuant to the 36 Guam Legislature Standing Rules. Today's hearing will address several key resolutions. The first resolution on the agenda is Resolution Number 343-36C-R, which is relative to expressing the utmost support of Imanaitran Taisai's Nalisatornguahan for the passes of H.R. 6823, the Elizabeth Doll Home and Community-Based Services for Veterans and Caregivers Act of 2022, which seeks to expand veterans' access to home caregivers by providing a critical investment in caregiver support at the U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs. Resolution Number 348-36C-R is relative to requesting the Guam Department of Education to incorporate financial literacy into its high school curriculum as a standalone course and require successful completion of the course as a graduation prerequisite beginning the school year 2023 to 2024. All right. And that will be all on our agenda today. I thought we were having a confirmation hearing, but that's not on the agenda. I would like to address the very first resolution we have, which is Resolution Number 343-36C-R. And we have with us today Mr. Tim Ugin, the Director of Veteran Affairs Guam, and Lucy Perez. And maybe you can state your position when you give your testimony. Resolution Number 343-36C-R is relative to expressing the utmost support of Imanaitran Taisai's Nalisatornguahan for the passes of H.R. 6823, Elizabeth Doll Home and Community Based Service for Veterans and Caregivers Act of 2022. This act seeks to raise the cap on how much veteran affairs can pay for the cost of home care from 65% of the cost of nursing home care to 100%, establishing a pilot program to address home health aid shortages, providing respite care to caregivers of veterans enrolled in home care programs, and coordinating expanded VA home care programs with other VA programs such as the Program of Comprehensive Assistance for Family Caregivers and Medicare's PACE Program. The act will also allow the VA to provide a coordinate handoff for veterans and caregivers denied or discharged from the Program of Comprehensive Assistance for Family Caregivers into any other home care program that they may be eligible for. Ilisatornguahan finds and supports this measure introduced by Congresswoman Julia Brownlee because veterans residing in Guam have bravely fought for our nation and sacrificed their freedom. And so we continue to advocate and stand in support to our veterans for these specific I would now like to invite the Director of Veteran Affairs, Tim Ugin, if he has any testimony, and then Lucy Perez, Lucia Perez, if she has any as well. Why are you guys sitting so far from each other?
Hafte day and good afternoon, Senators Shelton, Senator Ada, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Telo, and of course you, Mrs. Chairman, Senator Nelson. My name is Tim Ugin. I am the Director of the Office of Veterans Affairs, the State Office, and I'm in support of the resolution for two reasons. I myself was a primary, my wife and I were primary caregivers for my sister, who unfortunately passed away last November. So I understand the challenges of home care and being the primary caregiver for somebody that is in desperate need of health care. Although we were not, my sister was not eligible for it due to the requirements of the benefit, I am grateful for the former First Lady Elizabeth Doll's vision and commitment to the veterans and the veteran community, and you, Senator Nelson, for introducing this. We greatly appreciate your commitment to the veterans community of Guam. I also like to point out that the Office of Veterans Affairs is in line in supporting this also. Ms. Lucy Perez, who's going to give her testimony right after me, she is now the head of the Veterans Health Section in our agency that we are going to use to support the programs like this and this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ugin. Lucia Perez?
Good afternoon, Senator Shelton, Senator Ada, Senator Brown, and Senator Tid agree, and of course, you, Chairperson Nelson. On behalf of the veterans and their families, I also, on the office, is in support of this resolution. It is a much-needed resolution. It's not just for Guam, but also for our other Veterans Affairs Offices nationwide. As we may, as you may know, some of the programs will and is supposed to be going up for renewal in FY 2023. So this resolution will help to, it's like a safety net for those who are not eligible for this program. It also will standardize and set up an assessment tool, which is needed, so that other veterans may become eligible for this program. Guam, in its special capacity, right, we're matriarch, we're familial, we take care of our families, but we do have veterans on island who need the support. Families have to work several jobs just to keep their benefits, to keep their households in check, to be able to provide for their families. So being able to take care or hire a caregiver is, is for some, far-reaching, right? It's almost equivalent to a mortgage. And so for those families that are not able to have those monies readily available, this program, this resolution, will help them. For example, it'll expand the eligibility. So it'll take a look at, and in addition, with the PACT Act being passed, it would also work together so that our veterans that are out there that need help, for example, with COPD, with the different forms of cancer, can at least have some other form of assistance until we can ensure that we're able to provide that extra care for our families. So this is a much-needed support. It's a resolution that is due, and it is for our veterans and their families. They willingly went out to fight for our freedoms, so therefore, we as a community should be able to at least help them fight for this program for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. I'll open it up, I'll open the panel up for any questions. We'll start with Senator Ada. Senator Ada, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
No, I don't have any questions or comments. Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank you for introducing this resolution. It is very important for our own families here locally to do what we can to support the caregivers of our veterans, and also to let them know that respite care is also very important, as, you know, our caregivers can get burnt out. And anything that we can do to relieve them of the stress, or anything that we can do to help make it just a little bit easier for them to continue the care of their loved one and their veteran, then, you know, I think we are more than accomplishing what we have set out to do. So, Madam Chair, again, thank you for the introduction of this resolution and full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senators. Senator Shelton, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you to the panel for being here today in support of this resolution. I think this is a good step for us here in the legislature to take, to show our support, a united effort from the people of Guam for our veterans and for our caregivers. I wanted to ask Mr. Ugin, for those who are watching at home for our veterans and their caregivers today in our community, what are the support services that are available to them? And what can we expect if this H.R. 6823 were to pass?
So right now, for those that are eligible, there are a number of programs that are available locally through nonprofit organizations. As I mentioned earlier, through our agency, we are, Lucy is going to be heading up the Health Services Division, where we're going to be able to liaison locally to help tie these veterans that are out there searching for this, these types of assistance, so...
Okay, thank you very much. I wonder, through your services, do you also connect our veterans to other local programs besides the nonprofit programs, such as the Division of Senior Citizens? If our veterans may be a senior citizen seeking some other types of care, such as food delivery or respite care for their caregivers through those programs?
Yes, so currently, our office doesn't have that type of program, but yes, I, as a primary caregiver for my sister, those services are available, because my sister was receiving them. So I know that they're out there and they're available, but now, moving forward, we're going to be able to engage ourselves with those services at the local level, so we can work with the mayor's offices, work with public health, and work for, with mental health and behavioral health to tie them in, and for us to be the gateway to provide those services and connect them to the appropriate veteran.
Thanks, thank you very much for that answer. That was what I was hoping to hear, that we were going to start those programs. I know that was part of the discussion when we passed the SERVE Act earlier this year with the UOG veteran cohort, and so it's good to know that the progress is being made, and from our local veteran agency, that we are making the local connections, because though sometimes we think the federal government may forget about our veterans, or we're the last in mind because we're so far away, we have some local programs here that we can also help connect our veterans to that can be of service. And so thank you very much for the work that you're doing, and of course, I am also in full support of this resolution. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
If I may, Senator, thank you for that, the SERVE Act, because we will not be able to, our capacity would not be able to service that if it had not been for that, right? So now we're able to stand up the Health Section for our agency, and now we can be the liaison and the gateway for those services for the veterans in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Brown, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't have any questions. I think we can all concur, if you're a veteran yourself or a family member of a veteran, certainly, some of these illnesses that veterans suffer years later are service-related, and certainly, they can address compensation for that. But anything that can expand the assistance, and we recognize as members of our community, especially as they age and are getting older, I mean, some of these veterans don't even have extended families. I mean, we're kind of used to the idea, you know, having grown up in our local community, that there's always a family or family members there to assist, and that's not always the case, either because, you know, younger people have moved off island, or other family obligations keep them from being able to be, and some people require, and some of these veterans require sometimes consistent and full-time health care. In normal circumstances, it's, this is something that's beyond the reach of most people, even if they have Medicare and other things that they can rely on, certainly, anything we can do to support our veterans community on Guam will be well-received. So thank you, and thank you for coming, both of you, to testify today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tid agree, do you have any questions or comments for the panel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I think, you know, I passed other legis, well, not passed, but I was hoping to get legislation on the session floor with regards to a bill for senior living, and this goes hand-in-hand with that, you know? Our population is aging quickly. We're looking at, in 2034, there will be more seniors than there are children in America, and this is the same thing with the aging population of our veterans as well. And many of them prefer to stay at home, and this, I think this legislation is going to provide that services for them to be able to stay at home and you live out the rest of their lives in an area that's more familiar. I mean, they deserve it for what they did for our country. It's, it's important that we provide them that comfort level, but it's also important to provide who's ever there to care for them, you know, the funding that they're going to need. Many families have to quit their job to take care of their, their parents as they age, and they lose a huge amount of income, you know, to provide, and we know the cost of living is very, very high. And the question I have, though, you know, for you, Mr. Ugin, is the, the funding source. This legislation in Congress has yet to pass at this point. They're, they're waiting for this to pass. Hopefully, it will. What would your office do once it passes? Is there an application that you fill out as a U.S. territory? I mean, we know that this, veterans get so much support and, you know, funding options living in the U.S., but the territories, sometimes we are left behind in many circumstances. So what are you going to do once this is passed? Is there an application to fill out? Or you want me to ask Ms. Perez, because it looks like she might be ready to answer that?
Well, I can, so, right now, because of the SERVE Act, we're able to stand up the Health Section for our agency to support this resolution and the H.R. Elizabeth Doll's bill, right? So we're already ahead of the game. We're already planning, Lucy is working with our staff to connect with all the agencies and the nonprofit organizations to move forward for health care within our community for the veterans and their families. I'm not, I perused the, the, the H.R. earlier and sometime last week, but I, I didn't come across anything in regards to additional VA funding for the territories. If there is, maybe there will be some type of fund site or grant, unless Ms. Perez has already seen any type of notification or publication that states that there's going to be additional funding for the states and territories outside of grants, so...
Ms. Perez, you have anything to add to that?
Sure, so, this is going to be VA statewide, right? So there's the amount that just goes into the federal VA. The families or the veterans will have to apply through the same process to va.gov through the caregivers program. And then, once they meet that eligibility and they're approved, then their primary caregiver, whoever stated on the account, will be the individual that will be getting a stipend. And again, it's all provided if they meet the eligibility standards. So that funding is taking care of the federal side. What the Guam office will do is be like that bridge to connect the veterans, to help them or their family fill out that application, and make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, and if there's any other documentation that they will need, for example, if it required a copy of their passport, if it required a copy of their military ID, that our office will assist that veteran or family to make sure the documentations are in place. And then if there's any other information or steps that needs to be provided for the primary caregiver, then our office will serve as that conduit, because there's also information that the primary caregiver will need to provide to ensure that all the fiduciary responsibilities are met.
So, in other words, the funding that this legislature provided for this program, that funding is not going to be used to cover the cost of an individual who wants to be a caregiver, who gives up their job and comes home, correct?
Correct. That's not through the local funding, correct?
So currently, if I'm not mistaken, there are opportunities for individuals to, to care for veterans at home now. I mean, I believe the stipend is about $160 a month. It's very minimal.
It's very minimal, and there is, the requirements are a lot higher than what our local veterans can meet. So having this resolution in place will actually go back and require a federal VA to look at this tool that they use to ensure that we expand the, the area or expand the number of people that will be eligible for it.
Yeah, and then provide a little bit more money than $160 a month.
Exactly.
For somebody to quit their job, you know, to, to care for them.
Right.
It's going to be a little bit more, and, and what is that?
Yeah.
Do you know what that amount would be or estimated to be at if an individual were to decide to quit their job to...
They have not given us the new amount yet. I was in Hawaii two weeks ago for the National Directors Meeting for the Veteran Association, and that was brought up to the undersecretary, also, and the Secva Secretary of VA, of them to take a look and let all of the VA directors know what that amount would be, because we have all, all 50 states and territories stated that just the cost of living itself has increased tremendously, that the amount that is being, currently being offered does not even cover costs for food for that veteran. So we've got to take a look at what tool or what formula they're utilizing to ensure that it meets the 2023 standards rate of living versus the 1980s rate. And so that's what we were pushing for. So once we get that information, then we'll be able to pass it out to our veterans.
Okay, so those who are listening, you know, the listening audience, especially our veterans, or those who are caring for veterans now, and to keep an eye open for this legislation to be passed in Congress and to provide that amount. But one last question, though, I forgot to ask, with regards to spouses of veterans. You talked about the flexibility that this resolution will provide and expand it to those to care for them. Would this include the spouses of a veteran?
This is for the veterans themselves. They would only allow, in the current rules, it allows for one primary caregiver and a secondary should the primary become unavailable, but it does not cover at this time the care of the spouse.
Not the care of the spouse?
Right. But it's the care of the veteran themselves.
Now, I'm talking about the, because this bill talks about providing a stipend to the caregiver.
Yes.
And, and I was asking, does this also include if the caregiver is the spouse of the veteran?
If she's the primary, he or she is the primary, yes, that's considered the primary.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, currently, it does that now, but I just wanted to make sure. Yes, I have, this is the one that's currently now, Mr. Ugin?
Yes.
Okay, that we're seeing, and those who are listening can see this on the website.
If you go to va.gov, or you just go into your Google and just Google veterans caregiver information, it'll take you directly to the website.
Yeah, and this is, this is currently on the website. So anybody who's listening, who are looking at providing some kind of care or, you know, assistance, they can go there. Can they find this also on your website, the Office of Veterans Affairs?
There is, I believe we're, we should be upgrading the link to add on the link.
Okay.
But in the event that the link isn't put on by weekend, they can always call our office at 671-475-8388, and just inquire about what it is that they, he or she needs to do to apply for a caregiver's program.
Well, thank you so much for that, and, and I do highly recommend that you, you place it on your website.
Yes.
And make it more convenient for those listening.
Yes.
Other than that, of course, I stand in support of this, anything to help our veterans, especially those who are in a situation where they can't care for themselves.
Right.
It's, it's very much needed. Well, thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tid agree. Can you, can you explain the difference or the impact of what this bill would do, should it pass, on the current HUD-VAS, that, which is the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing? Either Tim or Lucy?
So the HUD-VAS, the HUD-VAS program is, and there's, so HUD-VAS is the voucher system that is provided to, for example, for Guam to Gura. And I believe the last time we had checked, there was either 20 or 25 certificates or vouchers available. And again, in order for a veteran to avail of that, they have to be eligible for the program. So they have to follow the same rules and regulations that are in place for Gura. It doesn't automatically make that person eligible for the service. So what this does is that it'll open up again the criteria. So for example, one of the items or criteria when you go into a federal housing is you can't have any domestic violence cases on you, right? Or already, how would you say? It went through the court system. You can't have any systems in place where you were, had bad conduct. So what this does is that it opens that up and it looks at it, because in the 1970s and 80s, bad conduct was just that. It could have been one thing for answering back, right? At that time, PTSD was not a recognized, post-traumatic stress disorder was not a recognized medical concern. So if you have a bad conduct on your record, which may or may not have given you a dishonorable discharge from your military service, what this program will do is go back and will allow the VA office to go up and fight for our veteran and say, hey, it may have said on their DD 214 or their NGB 21 for National Guard Bureau, right? They were dishonorably discharged because of bad conduct. It may have been because of this PTSD. So we'd like you to take a look at it and open the case up and change that if possible. So that's what this allows. It allows the VA office to work with, with the veteran themselves and the VA federal side to look and open up the case and help the veteran, so that we can give them an opportunity to get services which they deserve. So it's pushing the envelope and pushing for a yes, even if the yes is a no, but at least we're able to go and fight for the veteran and their family.
Thank you very much, Lucy.
If I may?
Do you want to add anything, Director?
Yes, thank you. So it's twofold, right? One, the veteran needs to be eligible for the HUD-VAS voucher, and then the, the house or apartment or whatever residence is going to be, needs to also be in line with the Gura requirements. I say this because we had to, I had to go through that process too for my sister. So the bottom line is that the veterans, this should, now that it's 65% to 100%, maybe we'll see an influx of veterans coming forward and self-identifying themselves with the need, but the bulk of the, the work and the volume will be at HUD-VAS and Gura to accommodate the rise in applications to be eligible for that.
Thank you, Director. Lucy, you mentioned that you were, several weeks ago, you were at a conference with the Secretary of VA and other members of the Veteran Affairs Offices statewide and within its territories. Is there any concerns that they may have had with this legislation? And perhaps we can include those additions to be looked at, should it go down to the Senate?
No, there wasn't any concern, but it was pushed out that we were unanimous in our voice, that the VA, the federal VA, had to work even faster to make sure that all of our veterans are protected and are covered in the event, because 2023 is coming up really fast, and if this mechanism is not in place, there will be some individuals that'll fall out. And then now we have not only homeless, an increase in homeless veterans, but we're also going to have an increase in veterans out there who don't have families to take care of them. who don't have families to take care of them or who do have families to take care of them but are unable to because of the high cost of living. So that was what was pushed out and that they needed to ensure that our veterans were taken care of and it doesn't get caught up in all the other bills and resolutions and not wait for the next year to be passed, but currently before Christmas.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. There are no other testimonies on this resolution. So we will move on to the next resolution. We'll just take a quick five-minute break so that we can have the other individuals that are giving testimony to come into the public hearing room. And that will be on Resolution Number 348-36COR, which is relative to requesting the Guam Department of Education to incorporate financial literacy into its high school curriculum as a standalone course and require successful completion of the course as a graduation prerequisite beginning with school year 2023 to 2024. And I missed this. We do have a confirmation hearing. It is the confirmation for Ms. Carolyn Borja to serve as a member of the Guam Education Board, which is a parent of a student that is currently enrolled in GDOE. And that is the member position she is being confirmed for. So just a quick five-minute recess. Thank you. Okay, we are back for recess. We are now going to discuss Resolution Number 348-36COR, which is relative to requesting the Guam Department of Education to incorporate financial literacy into its high school curriculum as a standalone course and require successful completion of the course as a graduation prerequisite beginning with school year 2023 to 2024. This resolution was introduced by Senator Adda, so I will welcome him to make the remarks on the resolution. Senator Adda?
No, go ahead. Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 348-36 is a request by this legislature to ask, and I reemphasize the word "ask," right? The Guam Education Board to implement such a policy by the school year 2023, 2024. And perhaps maybe looking at eliminating Algebra I or Geometry prerequisites to make it a high school graduation requirement. As you know, that financial literacy is important to every adult. I mean, when we have, we look at our young adults today, and how many of them actually know how to open a checking account, open a savings account, balance a checkbook? The importance of when they apply for a loan or a credit card? What's the importance of their credit score? So we want to make sure that when our young adults decide whether they're going to go to college, it's very useful for them, learning how to financially budget themselves in college or if they go to the workplace, you know? That going out there, they'll be able to ensure that, yes, I get a check. I can deposit this check into my checking account. And because I have a stack of checks in my checkbook, that doesn't mean I have all the money in the account. So I think having this financial literacy policy in place and having our students go through it, perhaps it being a requisite for graduation may help them in the future and ensure that we don't find our young adults struggling financially because they weren't taught the basic skills of learning how to manage their money properly. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd just like to open up to the Department of Education to hear their testimony and see how that we can work together to move this resolution forward and implement this policy into the Department of Education schools. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge our Department of Education Board Chair, Mr. Mark Vendiola, Mrs. Geteres, and Ms. Carolyn Borja. Can, I don't know the student's name, but I'll offer it up to you guys to give testimony. And then if you'd like the students to go first, just please state your name for the record. And thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Senator Tina Nelson. Appreciate the opportunity, honorable senators, to be here. We have a student here in our presence, so I would like to yield my time first to allow her to speak. I believe she has written an oral testimony today.
Thank you. Please proceed. Who's going first?
Hello.
Okay.
Hafaday, Chairwoman Nelson, and members of the committee. My name is Ella Fae Escano, Public Relations Officer for School Year 2022/2023 of the Islandwide Board of Governing Students and a junior at Ukadu High School. I am here this afternoon on behalf of the IBOGs. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to testify on Resolution Number 348-36 relative to requesting the Guam Department of Education to incorporate financial literacy into its high school curriculum as a standalone course and require successful completion of the course as a graduation prerequisite beginning with school year 2023-2024. We conducted student surveys through our Instagram and Twitter social media page to Guam Department of Education high school students for two weeks. The total number of students who responded to the survey was 103. The results and percentages are as follows. 44.7% of respondents support the resolution. 33% of the respondents do not support the resolution at all. And 22.3% of the respondents were undecided. The respondents who supported the resolution expressed concerns about the requirement being implemented for current students next school year. The respondents believed that the class of 2024 would have too much stress getting all of their required credits due to it being their senior year of high school. Additionally, most juniors have a plan for their senior year schedule, and implementing this course would interfere with their already set plan. We agreed the resolution is a useful class for young adults to learn due to its educational benefits so they can be better prepared for adulthood. But there are concerns for the class of 2024 at this time. The Islandwide Board of Governing Students offers the following recommendations and approaches to the resolution. Number one, require all schools to offer the standalone financial literacy course. Number two, change policy to allow for students to take the financial literacy course without first passing Algebra I and Geometry. Number three, strongly recommend that all students currently in high school who have available credits to take the financial literacy course but not make it required, as students may have other plans for their CCL course. Number four, offer financial literacy as a priority math elective course during all credit recovery periods such as Esquelen Puengi or summer school. And lastly, number five, if we wish to make it a requirement for all students, we can start with the class of 2027, which are the incoming ninth graders during the school year 2023 to 2024. It is important to establish a reasonable implementation date for Resolution Number 348-36. Thank you once again on behalf of the Islandwide Board of Governing Students for the opportunity to submit our testimony on Resolution Number 348-36. Students' voice matters in our education.
Thank you, Ellie Faye. Are you going to give testimony, Mark, Mr. Vendiola, or...?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the IBOGs representative. Obviously, when it comes to policy, we listen to our stakeholders. And I just want to thank Senator Tony Adda. You reached out to me regarding this proposal and this resolution. The board does support it, or at least I do. I know that. My wife's currently a math teacher, and I had some lengthy discussions with her about financial literacy. And had I known what I know now with respect to financial literacy, I think it's a very important component of our education. I know at this point, it's embedded in the curriculum, but I know you want it to be more pronounced. And the department is able to pivot to do that type of transition and in support of what our IBOGs folks are suggesting. And obviously, this will come to a board policy. We definitely take into consideration this resolution. It speaks volumes to the time that we're currently in when it comes to educating our children. And there are many other things that we would love to tap into our curriculum. We have a lot of trades. We have a lot of academies within the different schools. And, you know, we try to meet the needs of our students. But financial literacy, obviously, is, to me, is an important one. And so, you know, with this resolution, you know, should it get passed by the legislature, it's duly noted to the board. We'll take it under advisement. And we will work internally within the Department of Education to implement and work it through our curriculum and instruction committee so that we get a really robust curriculum that will not only hit the high school but also expose all the way down to the middle and elementary schools. I think it's important so that when it comes to high school, they're able to already engage in that type of framework. And so with that, I stand in support of the resolution, and I appreciate the authors and the supporters of this resolution. This is us really working together. And I think one of the things that's important is if it was quote-unquote mandated potentially, you know, we have resources in the federal side that we can implement to start it and pilot, get it off the ground using those resources, you know, in the school system. And so we've had discussions in our curriculum instruction, and I think it's just time that we really just put more teeth into it and really wrap ourselves around building it into the curriculum of the department. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there anyone else that would like to give testimony? Mark?
Hafaday, Madam Chair and Senators. My name is Mark Wang. I'm a high school senior and the youth representative to the JA Guam Board of Directors. It's my honor to speak on behalf of Junior Achievement Guam this afternoon in support of this resolution. I want to thank the senators here for allowing me to voice our support. JA Guam is a part of the JA Worldwide Network whose mission is to instill the pillars of financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and work readiness in the youth that serves across more than 100 countries. Locally, Junior Achievement has been serving Guam for 45 years with its flagship offering being the Annual Company of the Year Program, where students from different high schools come together in partnership with the support of local sponsoring companies to create, market, and sell a product. And since its founding in 1975, JA Guam has been able to serve thousands of students. And it really has been its goal to hone the spirit of entrepreneurship, work readiness, and financial literacy in Guam's youth in order to succeed in today's economy. I myself am a product of the program, having been involved since my sophomore year. I can personally attest to how powerful the program has been when it comes to learning how to work effectively as a team and bring an idea to life. And it's all about providing experiential learning opportunities and to learn by doing. One of the most eye-opening parts of the program to me, however, has been learning about the financial side of a business. And I've been able to learn a little bit more about how to create a financial statement, track expenses, and just really how to think responsibly. You know, when we're in a team setting, when we're in our brainstorming sessions, you know, we're talking about all these different things that we want to be able to do. But at the end, there's always this question of how are you going to find the money to support it? How are you going to fund it? And so it's really been a great experience to be able to go through that process as an experience and really just consider, is it a financially smart choice? And it's knowledge that I would not have been able to gain had I not been involved in JA. It would not have been knowledge that I would have learned in the classroom. So with that being said, I believe it's a great idea to see how we can incorporate financial literacy into a classroom setting, especially today, you know, with things such as rising cost of living. We believe it is knowledge that should be accessible to everyone, not just for students who are taking time and seeking out programs like Junior Achievement to learn about financial literacy. So we see a gap in financial literacy education in Guam schools. Now, JA as a whole globally does not just offer the company program. We also offer a host of other programs to allow students to build knowledge in financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and work readiness. And one of them is called the JA Economics for Success Program. And this is a program that our organization on Guam has been trying to build momentum on in the past year in order to fill the financial literacy education gap. It's a free program that is targeted towards middle school students in introducing to them about topics like budgeting, risk management, spending. And we're able to go through the entire program in about three hours. So we're really talking about things like, you know, what are the things that go into a budget? What's the difference between a credit and debit card? And, you know, what are the benefits and drawbacks to having insurance? And these are all topics that can get quite complicated. And personal finance itself is a very large topic. But our goal is to get students aware of these topics and hopefully instill a curiosity to learn more on their own time. How we've been hosting this program on Guam is that it's led by high school students like me who have participated in the company program and are taking time to share their knowledge with younger students. You know, that way we're able to provide a peer-to-peer mentoring aspect to the program. But with the way the program is structured, we're limited in the amount of students we are able to reach. You know, we have a pilot program. And, you know, teachers would engage this website with students in a classroom. And, you know, on this website are all the, all the materials we would talk about in our workshops. But still, it's still a pilot program that we're working on. And even then, however, we still have a lot of work that we need to do. It doesn't take more than a week for teachers to go over the website with students. So really, there's still a lot more that we can do in terms of diving deeper into personal finance topics. As high school students who help run the program, our goal has always been to provide a solution in terms of hopefully inspiring the students that we work with to have a curiosity to learn more about personal finance. But we believe that is really through a permanent course, you know, whatever, however it is structured, through a permanent course on personal finance that we can really dive into more detailed topics and cover a broader scope. Junior Achievement is all, is a strong believer in the unbounded potential of students. It is a strong believer in inspiring and providing opportunities for students, for students to learn and succeed in today's world. And it is a strong believer that all students deserve access to financial literacy education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. I'll now open it up to the other Senators. Mrs. Gutierrez, are you going to? Okay. Mrs. Gutierrez.
Good afternoon, Senators. I'm here because as the lead advisor for the island-wide School Board of Governing Students, the IBOX. And when this resolution came out, I asked the IBOX if they can do a survey so that they could, you know, get the input from the other students. And as you see on the testimony and also during their work session last week with the other representative, they have reached out to their peers at school. They are not opposing the resolution. As you know, the percentage is higher. It's just that the beginning is what they're asking for consideration. And I'm sure that you would understand too where they're coming from. So all I ask of you is consider the recommendation on the beginning when this should start. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gutierrez. So I'll open it up to the main sponsor and my colleagues for any questions and comments. Senator Ada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to the, to the panel, thank you. And also to the island-wide Board of Governing Students, thank you for that testimony and the recommendations for the, for the resolution moving forward. And that's why whenever I work with Department of Education in either crafting legislation or resolution, if there's something that we can do at a, instead of mandating and asking the board and, and the department to work with us in implementing such programs, especially since they already have it, then how is it that we can best do it moving forward? And with your recommendations, perhaps we can incorporate that into the resolution and have it start in school year 2027 is what you recommended, right? And also with your other recommendations, we appreciate that as well. I think that it's going to be, financial literacy for our students is, is going to be a plus for them, especially in this day and time where times are difficult and people are trying to find ways to either budget or learn how to spend wisely. And our young adults will be becoming adults or becoming parents or becoming, joining the workforce. And we want to make sure that when they do go out there, that they have the tools to run their household and run, run their lives in a, in a very positive way. Mark, thank you for your testimony as well, you know, with the JA supporting this resolution. We appreciate that, and we appreciate what you've done over the, over the course at JA and how you guys move forward and learning about the budgeting process that, you know, that it takes, it takes more than just, you know, looking at a project that you want to do and think that you can do it without having the finances or the creative way of financing it to ensure that your project moves forward. So to the panel, thank all of you. Mrs. Gutierrez, Mr. Mendiola, thank you guys for coming down and supporting. Ms. Borja, thank you for being here as well to support this resolution. I appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senators. Senator Shelton, do you have any comments or questions for the body, for the panel?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank everyone who came, especially the students, for sharing their perspective and doing a little bit of research with your peers to see what their thoughts are for, for this resolution and this type of policy moving forward. I want to thank the, the sponsor. I know that this, this is something that I heard about since my time in high school. There were groups, different financial institutions coming to speak to us to talk about financial literacy. And I think when you're that age, sometimes it's beyond you, it escapes you. But something like this, a program that's really even more incorporated into the curriculum of the department, that can be driven home year after year from a very young age for our students, is something that is necessary to help our students be even more well-rounded leaving the school system and entering into the workforce. I know that this is something that'll be beneficial to everyone, and so I stand in support of this resolution, of course, with the suggestions made today. Sisus Massey.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Brown?
All of you from DOE that have come to testify, and certainly our board members of coming here. You know, since my days in education, it's been a long time, as for some of us. But, you know, you want to make sure that our students going through the public education system get the most basic of education, because some don't even walk out with that. And I spent nine years in public school. A lot of my influences is from that. And I think that with all the investment that's been made, granted, some might think it's not enough, but it's a huge chunk of, of the people's budget. But these are practical skills that we would like our, our students to have. You would like to think a lot of these things are taught in the home, but many children don't get that exposure. You know, I learned to write my first check, or at least pretend to write my first check, because I learned that at school, and I still, you know, have to, you know, still write that check. And it seems like a very basic thing, but, but it isn't for a lot of people. Just to, to experience is very simple. But if you don't know how to do it, or what the, what it, what it means in processing it, and what it takes out of your account, it could be a little hurdle. And I think just having these basic life skills that we need coming out, I mean, we had home economics. I still know how to sew, hand-sew things, because I went to my home economics class. They showed us how to make bread that I forgot. But these things do matter in your life. They make a big difference. So I'm certainly supportive of the, the resolution. Certainly thank Senator Ada, the sponsor, for bringing it forth. And thank you again for coming in and providing your input.
Senator Tid agree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too thank everyone who's here today to testify. Especially like to thank Mark for being here and Mr. Wang, a lengthy testimony that you provided. But a lot of it in here makes some, makes sense. You know, I was thinking earlier, I think I would rather see this go into the middle school arena to get them prepared for, instead of going straight to high school at a high school level, that they pass certain tests at a middle school level. But I know that this is a resolution that is put together for the board to consider to get the conversation started, most especially. And I'm pretty sure there's going to be more people chiming in to this resolution, and hopefully something will come that's good from it. I, I'm a person who's more of a numbers person than anything else, and appreciate this legislation. But I just wanted your take on this, Mr. Wang, Mark, right? There's two Marks on the table, sorry, Mark. The, the younger one. I was going to say something else, but that Mark. So how do you feel about taking this to, because you mentioned in your testimony about, you know, middle school. And how do you feel about that? Putting this requirement, you know, to pass tests or anything at a middle school level before they get into high school?
So, so with the middle school students that we've been able to work with, I think on our end, we're, it's really important for us to see how we can keep it in terms of basic level, right? We don't want to dive too complicated into, in terms of personal finance topics. But again, it's, it's our goal to, to be able to get these students interested to learn more about personal finance. And I think if we're looking at introducing this as a course in terms of middle school, I think it's just really important to, to be mindful of the student population you're working with and not, because what that is, when we first started with this program, it was really also difficult for us on our end because, you know, we don't want our students to get bored or seemingly uninterested in the workshops, right? So I think it's just really important to pay atten, to be mindful of the student engagement aspect. But I think it is definitely for middle school students and even with Chairman Mendiola mentioning about all the way down to lower, at elementary school, right? I think building interest and, you know, anticipation of, and having an understanding of that, you know, personal finance is a thing, and it's a wide field. I think starting that at a younger age is, is going to be beneficial.
Yeah, thank you for that. I also saw something on another testimony saying that it's a requirement that should start before they take algebra and, and geometry. How do you feel about that, Mr. Wang? Mark?
So I think in terms of prerequisites for math, there's definitely, personal finance, it is quantitative, is a numbers field, but there are also sides that you don't really need to, like, in terms of like algebra and geometry. And so I think in terms of when we talk about prerequisites, it would be in terms of, you know, what is the final, personal finance, the financial literacy course? What is the course that we're designing? What is it going to look like? And if it's heavy on math, then definitely a prerequisite. But I think that's a question that's going to come down to when you're developing the curriculum and seeing what you're trying to put in and whatnot. So my answer would be, it would depend on what, what are the topics that are going to be included and what's not going to be included.
Thank you. And, you know, from your perspective, I think it's important that we, how to also engage, you know, our students to go into this type of, you know, understanding of finances and the importance of it, you know? It's really important. I mean, one plus one is one, you know, and you go to geometry and algebra. But the real life, you know, reality is, is being able to take care of your finances and understand the importance of savings and why, and even go further than just what you're going to purchase next week, but something that you're going to purchase in the future. I mean, we all know about loans and car loans, but it goes even further. It talks about, you know, being prepared for one day when you get married, you have that funding set aside, and you have another funding set aside. But it's, it's a reality that, that's mostly used when it comes to math and finances. So I appreciate your testimony, and I hope that you, you stay part of this, you know, idea of, of, you know, this type of math being taught at the middle school and high school level. I think I would like to see it start at middle school. But most importantly, to encourage the other students to want to study this. I think you can bring a perspective there on how do you engage them and want them to learn? That, that's going to be the, one of the hardest challenges, is getting the students involved, wanting to be involved. So thank you so much again for the panel for being here, and appreciate your time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tid agree. I want to thank the members of the board for coming out and Eli Fay and Mark for being student representatives. A lot of the information you've given us has really given perspective to this situation. You know, sometimes we, in high school, I remember saying, well, what are we going to do with this type of education? What are we going to, what am I going to do with calculus? How am I going to use that in the real world? And really, I'm not using it right now. But financial literacy, we're always going to be addressing these types of challenges and changes within our personal finances. And I co-sponsored this is because we want to ensure that our seniors are built for success. Many seniors leave high school without knowing how to balance their finances and without making responsible choices on their money management. And that's a challenge for them. Many seniors leave high school, going into college, getting a lot of credit cards, and then ending up in, in huge debt, not being able to pay their credit card, and then they don't understand the impact of the credit score. And so these are basic life skills that we want to ensure that our seniors leaving today can move forward and be prepared when they graduate this coming year. I know it may seem like an additional work, but if this can be added as a replacement to one of the requirements in the school, in the classroom, because, you know, the curriculum doesn't always require you to go through Algebra I, trig, geometry, Algebra II, Cal I, Cal II. That the curriculum provides students with a diverse option, especially to improve their math skills. And so if these are one of the options, definitely our seniors will be better prepared to enter into the real world, especially as we come into this whole changing global impact of, of global finances as we see it from the impact of COVID-19 and other governments making, you know, different changes in the stock market that are affecting all of us today. And I'd like to offer the opportunity to the sponsor for his closing remarks. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Perhaps Eli Fay, do you think you would be able to do another survey, student survey, with the recommendations that you've proposed to the legislature and see what the numbers would come out then? And hopefully that, you know, more people will be in support, knowing that it would, that if the, the recommendation to go to class 2027 and all the others that you listed, and we see how that would gauge and the interest and, and the support of the resolution moving forward. I mean, we, it's already a good support 44, but I think if we can get more students to, to come on board and say, yeah, you know what? If, if these recommendations are, are placed in, into the, into the resolution, perhaps this is something that, you know, we can look forward to and for the benefit of all the students on our island. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. This concludes our hearing for the resolution. Now we'll move into the confirmation hearing. So we'll just break for three minutes. So if those that are not here to give testimony for the confirmation of Ms. Karen Borja, you can proceed outside. Otherwise, those please stay. Now we'll move into the confirmation hearing, so we'll just break for three minutes. So if those that are not here to give testimony for the confirmation of Ms. Carolyn Borja, you can proceed outside. Otherwise, those please stay. Okay, we are back from recess. We are now at the confirmation hearing of Ms. Carlin RCG Borja to serve as a member of the Guam Education Board, parent of a student currently enrolled in GDOE. Ms. Borja, usually we allow those that have come to give testimony for you to go first and then if you'd like to go first, that's fine too. Okay, great. We have a panel of members here that have come in support or to give testimony of Ms. Borja, so I'll open it up to the panel. Please state your name. We'll start from your left.
Hafeday Honorable Senators, Mark Mandiola, current Chairman of the Guam Board of Education. I come here this afternoon in support of the Ms. Carolyn Borja's candidacy or nomination to be on the Board of Education. I've known her for three years. A couple of years ago, a governor appointed me as the parent representative, and at that time, I didn't really know what I was getting myself into. I just knew that I had five kids into, in the school system. And, you know, I guess one of the challenges for me was, you know, having a child with disabilities was kind of really spurred my interest into really trying to come in and work within the Department of Education. But coming in with that lens as a parent representative was, it really just opened me to a lot of the challenges faced with the Department of Education. And in that role, you know, we kind of, you know, detail to the parent teacher organizations and all the other things that is involved in, in, in just being a board member. I can say that through my observation and through working with Carla that we've had a good working relationship and there's some really great accomplishments that I'm proud to say that the board has undertaken. We recently passed a strategic plan that really sets the roadmap for, we just heard a resolution about a financial literacy. And that strategic plan allows for that type of dialogue and that type of information to flow into the department so that we can actually move towards, you know, what the community and, you know, after all, you know, we are a public education and so the input from the community is very important. Ms. Carlin has led a lot of those efforts when it comes to dealing with our students and the parents in this role, although appointed, you know, she has a voting seat and she does represent the students and the families well. In my tenure as the chair, I tried to recall if she ever missed a meeting. I don't think she's ever missed a meeting, you know, and the committee that she's been a part of. So when it comes to commitment, determination and being engaged, I think that's the biggest thing being on the board. Oftentimes you can just say, ah, you know, that doesn't interest me, or you can move on, but when the information is flowing and people understand what's going on in the different committees, you know, it really helps to move the department and Carla has been very supportive in that regard. I think one of the things that kind of given me a sigh of relief is, as a parent too, she, she understands, you know, the challenges that some of the children face in the schools, especially students with disabilities. And so she's also a part of that organization within the department. It's a parent organization for children with disabilities and they all come together and they help formulate policy, address some of the challenges, and I was a part of that as the parent rep. And so, you know, when that comes to us at the board level, of course, you know, we defer to the folks that, that attend and get the support and get a general sense of what's going on, going out in the community. The other thing too, that I say one of our accomplishments as a board, you know, with, with respect to high risk, you know, with our federal oversight that's being mandated to the, to the Department of Education, all our board members understand and ladies and gentlemen, we're knocking at the door. I think we're, we turned the corner and I think in the next couple of weeks, months, we'll be able to report back to this, this great body that we were able to accomplish great things because of support from the board all the way down to management and to those areas. And so for those reasons, I am in full support. I'm speaking from the heart. This is not written testimony and I just think that she would do very well in continuing her journey. And the other thing I just want to point out, we are citizen volunteers. There are six members that are voted on the board and of course, there's three appointed by the governor. So as a citizen volunteer, you know, you're really dedicating a time away from other obligations or other priorities, but just to help support the Department of Education. So I really applaud her and thank her, thank her for wanting, accepting the call and the challenge to help out the Department of Education. And no kidding, it's Sis Massey for allowing me to provide this testimony and I hope that the Senate will confirm her nomination because we got a lot of work ahead of us and we definitely need someone who has been with us and understands a lot of the issues we're facing today. Sis Massey.
Thank you, Mark.
Mrs. Gutierrez?
Hafeday Senators, again, thank you for being here. My name is Maria Talegutierrez, a citizen of the territory of Guam and resident of the mooning. I'm submitting, I'm submitting my personal testimony as a private citizen and colleague of Ms. Carlin RCG Borja, parent member on the Guam Education Board, in support of her appointment from the Honorable Lordess Elyon Guerrero. As a parent, I started on the board representing parents. I see now that we continue to have a parent rep on the board and that means really a lot. Ms. Borja and I became colleagues on the Guam Education Board during our, during my term as Vice Chair and Chairwoman since July 2019 to present. And she was right there during the difficult time of the pandemic and reaching out to parents to let them know what's going on. And Carlin has always been there. Her dedication and involvement in, on the Guam Education Board as a proud mother of Tubaías and Miguel, one is in the middle school and just, one just started high school. So she's going to be a parent on the public school system for what, seven, eight more years. She is very energetic and communicates effectively with the public school parents to promote and support the involvement of parents in their children's education. Ms. Borja chairs the Guam Education Board State Strategic Plan Goal Number Four, Family and Community Engagement Committee, to ensure that families and community stakeholders are informed on a consistent basis, promote greater access and engagement in classrooms, programs, activities, and policy decision, and to support families to assist with helping their children's academic, social, and emotional success in school. A parent member on the Guam Education Board plays a valuable role to be recognized as a very strong and powerful voice as a tool to improve education. Carlin Borja is the right parent to be a member. She is ready and committed to continue if this is confirmed once again. I am respectfully requesting this committee for favorable support in confirming Ms. Carlin RCG Borja's appointment to serve as the parent member on the board of, on the Guam Education Board. As you know, Senator, we're still on the journey of finding a superintendent and we need six votes in order for a superintendent to be permanently selected. And Ms. Borja, in the last meeting, was not able to join us because when you're in session, she cannot vote. She can't even get her, even if it's a very small stipend, she can't. So I ask, please put for board, whenever, when is your next session? Please confirm Ms. Carlin Borja because we really need that parent rep on the board. Sis Massey.
Thank you, Mrs. Gutierrez. We're always comforted that whenever Mrs. Gutierrez speaks, she mentions all the great things and then she adds the improvements. And so we're very grateful for that. So thank you, Mrs. Gutierrez. Eli Fay, are you going to give testimony for, on behalf of Ms. Borja? Okay. Please proceed.
So for the short time that I've known Ms. Borja, she has given great insight on the community of the disabled students as one of her children are part of that community. And I believe that it is so important to have that insight within the Board of Education. And as a student, I'm very proud to see that parents are standing up for their children and all of the community of students. And I believe that Ms. Borja does it best. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, Ms. Borja, you now have the floor to give your testimony.
Thank you, Hafeday Madam Chair, Senator Shelton, Ada, Brown, and Taidegui. Three years ago, I sat in this room to make my case for membership in the Guam Education Board. Once I was confirmed and started to attend board meetings, I started to ask myself, what have I gotten myself into? My colleagues were already well-versed in board policies, SOPs, and GDOE education speak, but after a couple of months, I finally got my bearings and was off and running. With encouragement from Mrs. Gutierrez, my colleagues on the board, and the support of the GDOE leadership, we gathered the island-wide PTO and PTA organizations to see them as stakeholders and find out what their needs were. In addition to the maintenance of buildings and facilities, staffing shortages, it was evident that student academic achievement, safety, and PTO, PTA, governance training were recurring concerns and needs. The pandemic put a halt to further meetings. This fall, we are looking to call them back and pick up where we left off, also to become members of a national organization for governance training and additional resources that are not available locally. As the first quarter of 2020 closed, the COVID-19 pandemic forced a shutdown. The Guam Department of Education was now faced with the question, how do we continue teaching and learning? With collaboration across all stakeholders and some creativity, we were able to offer three models of learning. However, we soon learned that two models were the best for most of our students. As public health restrictions eased, we entered into cohorts and were able to bring some of our students back on campus. The public was definitely not shy in sharing its dissatisfaction or its criticism of the decisions being made. I recall a post on social media stating that board members do not have kids in school so they don't know what it is like. I left my career of 10 years to stay home with my kids with, to be part of their online learning. I was the parent, part teacher, times six classes, times two kids, part aide, part counselor, breakfast and lunch lady, and the janitor. I watched amazing teachers and I watched struggling teachers make the best of their model of learning. Families faced new challenges from a device. If there were multiple children in the homes, one child was on a phone, one child was on an iPad if they had, the other one on a school-borrowed laptop. Access to the internet, especially when a teacher is a parent trying to teach as well as trying to help their students at home. Looking back, we have learned that some of our students definitely can thrive on the, on, in the on-learning model, while others, most of our students, especially our students with special needs and those in the special populations, the traditional in-person model of learning is for them. All in all, our students and our families made the best of a difficult situation. I think former Superintendent Fernandez said it best, we are flying a plane while we were still building it. Three years ago, I also said that I've learned strength in community, that by fostering connections between people, we can make difference in the world. Well, that couldn't be more true than it was today than 2019. And with community partners together, we are all making a difference right here on our very island. From organizations like Manjelu to Rainbows for All Children to Totu Guam, these organizations also support our kids and families through positive action curriculum, grief counseling, and health and wellness, just to name a few. And also, I have to mention the sports organizations outside of GDOE. We know how sports can help our kids. Evidence of effective community partnerships became more apparent as we looked at school accreditation reports as data sources informing the state strategic plan. The board's work is not just at its monthly meetings, it's at work sessions, subcommittee meetings, talking, lots of talking, emailing and messages in the, with the various stakeholders. As we took on the task of looking at the state strategic plan, it was clear that a parent piece was missing. I asked that we include family and community engagement. We wanted to establish a strong culture of strong families and community engagement to support the success of all of our students. We wanted to ensure that our families are regularly informed about school and department matters through the various media. We wanted to promote greater access and engagement in the classroom, school, as well as department programs, activities, and policy decisions. We wanted to raise the value of and maximize the impact of community partnerships and provide training and support to families to assist with helping their children's academic, social, and emotional successes in school. From the policy board to GDOE admin to teachers and faculty, we all work with the vision, every student responsible, respectful, and ready for life. We must continue to be relentless year after year to further this mission. There's still so much more work to be done. I respectfully request that this committee support to continue my work as the parent member on the Guam Education Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borja, for that testimony is very succinct. I'll open the floor up now to my colleagues, Senator Shelton. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions for Ms. Borja. I was here three years ago when we had your first hearing and I was proud to vote in favor of your confirmation then, and I'm full, in full support of your confirmation again. I've, I've seen you, I've seen you working, I've seen you in the board meetings that I catch on YouTube, I get the notifications all the time when DOE is live and you're meeting and you could be, you know, just interested in your kids, in your students at home, but instead you are caring for all of our students, interested in all of our students in the department. So thank you very much for your service over the last three years and I wish you the best in this next term that you will have. And as you said, we must be relentless and so we need people like you who are fighting for our kids in the education system to ensure that they are receiving the education that they deserve and fighting, as our student representative said here, being a voice of diversity, especially for individuals with disabilities who are in our school system, who we know, who need that love and need that zeal to, to, to be represented. So thank you very much for all that you do.
Thank you, Senator Shelton.
Thank you, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. I'd just like to thank Ms. Borja for answering the call again, once again, to serve on the Guam Education Policy Board. Eventually, I believe that you're going to be like Ms. Gutierrez or Mr. Mandiola, that 20 years later, you're still going to be here.
She has five kids, I only have two.
But instead of the appointed position that you will run for the school board one day and eventually, you know, we'll see you then and out there in the, in the public and getting elected to the school board and then, thank you for all that you do and especially with the full plate that you currently have, that you still have enough love and care to, to spread and give around. And I think that's, that's what it's all about is that, you know, we, we don't just care for ourselves, that we try to make the world a better place by giving, giving love and care to those that we can, when we can, and how we can, right? So thank you for all that you do. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Thank you, Senator Ada. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much also, Ms. Borja, for stepping up and wanting to continue serving on the board. You know, over the years, so many different layers have been added to education and I'm very much one for the fundamentals of making sure that we try to reach as many of our children, to make sure they have that opportunity to be well-educated so that they're, you know, defines your future in your life, where you go, what you do, who you can become. And one thing, you know, my parents always told me is, you know, the more educated you are, that's something no one can ever take from you, that's something that becomes yours. And, you know, a lot of our, our young people now, there's so much influence around them. We had influences, but not to the degree, you know, that, that our young people have now. And, and sometimes unfortunately, as you know, some parents don't take the time to spend with their children and keep track of their educational performance and kind of step in and provide them assistance when maybe they're not doing as well as we would like them to do. And certainly, I think your role is very important because it's wanting to make sure that our Department of Education is focusing on what really matters because there's so much layers, there's so much politics, a lot of politics in education goes all the way from DOE to the University of Guam. It's everywhere you go, it's amazing amount of politics in education. But it's making sure that the resources are going to the classroom and that the children ultimately are the ones that are benefiting from, from the whole system because when we have young people that, that are at an age when they should be graduating or are graduating and yet they're not up to the most basic standard of entering into, should they choose to go to college, not everybody needs to. should they choose to go to college, not everybody needs to. It's not everyone's calling, doesn't mean you're going to be not successful in your life, you don't go to college. But when they don't have the basic skill set from the 12th grade entering into the freshman year of college, you got to wonder. And these are our children that for whatever reason are falling through, falling to the cracks. So we want to make sure that we minimize that as much as possible and get them prepared. So what, in your role, having served and, you know, the opportunity to continue to do so, what do you see from your perspective? Because, you know, as, you know, Mr. Mendiola also has children, I mean, a lot of the grandchildren, great-grandchildren, I know Ms. Gutierrez has, that, you know, that's what their passion is of even wanting to serve on the board. But for you in particular, you're very articulate in relaying in your testimony your interest in wanting to continue to serve. What do you look for? What do you think might be missing that you bring to the table to ensure that our children are getting a good quality education?
I think really putting first, revisiting the strategic plan and adding that parent engagement piece. There are goals and objectives and strategies. And with the team that I worked with in formulating this plan, we kind of looked at all of the issues currently. We have parents who want to be there but are not there for their child because of work and income. We have families who kids should be seen and not heard. We have other families that want to help but don't know how to help. We have parents who have experienced trauma because of school, they won't set foot in school. So they won't even come to parent-teacher conference. So really, we've been trying to formulate, how can we bring those parents? You know, some, some communities operate with a lot of faith-based. So example, if I went to the ABF church and we talked about school and education, that might be effective there. Sports organizations really rally a lot of our students too. So there's so many different facets to family engagement and support. There's a district level, a school level. Secretary Cardona has a national initiative as well. So there's just so many different moving parts. So it really depends on our population. But I will share with you, we definitely have a glimmer of hope. My son attends TEEDs and High, he needs to select a college or career tract by the end of freshman year. So they are honing in on those skills already, saying, well, what do you want to be? We're going to put you on this tract and this is where you're going with it. So at least I know at my son's high school that that is definitely what they're doing. Then I was talking to LFA earlier and at Okadu, they're also having their kids engage in the different electives and different things that are going on. Two weekends ago, I was fortunate to be at the Micronesian Youth Forum and the students there, one of the girls stood up, actually, she's from Okadu. She stood up and she said, "I am vulnerable because I'm Micronesian, but I am never to be embarrassed that I am Micronesian. I can excel like my fellow classmates." And so we actually had a nurse. She came, she's of Micronesian descent, she said, "I worked at McDonald's, I went to UOG," now she works at GMH. Positive role models, if not in the home, outside in the community, really do help build our students. So when students can see others excel, then they want to do as well. And yes, we understand that a lot of support services, a lot of social and emotional issues. I was at a school and they were telling me, we're dealing with discipline. I'm like, that's the second week of school. But again, our pandemic children have been home for two years. My son went to summer school and just watching some of the other students in the other classes, they don't know how to engage, they don't know how to talk to people. One, some of them are afraid and some of them just don't have those skills because of the pandemic and being home. So definitely a lot of work to do. And like I said, community partnerships are amazing. West Care had this great program and I was like, how can I get my son to that program? Do I need to send the 128? But the 128 isn't being paid. Can I take off work and go? So there's, you know, so many different programs. Again, I mentioned Totu Guam is out there doing outreach, health and wellness, immunizations. I was at the Head Start Health Fair earlier this month. One of the doctors told me, they do an average of 40 physicals. I'm like, that's a lot for such a short period of time. They do immunizations because parents are putting it off because they can't afford it, they don't have insurance. So again, Senator Brown, so many different perspectives, so many different aspects. And again, each school has their own community within the school and they really know how to assess their kids, they know what the needs are. And we saw it in the accreditation reports. Some schools are fabulous with their partnerships. I'm like, I think that partnership needs to be in that school too. I think they would benefit from it. So that is what I have discovered, that is what we are working on over the past three years and the strategic plan is rolling out. And I want to make sure that everything we talked about, everything we agreed upon, everything all the other parents and stakeholders have said, we're moving forward, we want to move forward. And even though some of my colleagues won't be returning on the board, they put a lot of thought and effort and work. And I want to make sure that the parent piece I asked for and they voted on, that we're going to do it, we're really going to work it.
Well, I certainly appreciate your insight and your initiative and your dedication to contribute, to do what you do. You know, even the pandemic, I mean, when you hear that we're even concerned that some of our children, if they didn't go to school, don't eat. That was very disturbing. Not something, you know, all of us are exposed to, but certainly in the school system, that was quite an eye-opener. Like I said, I spent nine years and I started my elementary and my, back then, we had junior high school and public school. So all the way from my, I guess, first grade or kindergarten up to the ninth grade, I was in public school. And, you know, I didn't really experience that with my fellow classmates, but to hear that that is a real problem now, I mean, talk about not even worrying about their ability to be in the class and be attentive to learn, but just the most basic needs of these children for whatever reason, whatever circumstance are not being taken care of in our community is just, it's not good to hear. But at the same time, it makes you realize how important the work that our educational system does is almost the whole, in some cases, literally is being the parent to that child because they may not have that influence. And let's not kid ourselves with a drug problem, everything else we have. When we hear about that and the individuals that are caught up in that, parents that are caught up in that, that are not there to take care of the care of their children, it's almost unimaginable as a parent that cares for your child, that another parent could not care for their child. But certainly, again, I appreciate your initiative to take care, not only of your own, but everyone else is in the process by stepping up once again to serve in this capacity. So thank you and thank you to all that have come here to testify on your behalf.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Senator Titegui?
Sisus Massey. You know, I think it's really important when someone comes to step up to the plate and to provide their knowledge, their insight, and their time, energy taken away from their family, to be a part of the community and supporting the community. So I think it's important, I just wish there were more senators here to give you that respect. And I want you to know that, I mean, I'm here because of you being here today and providing, you know, our community, your services, for stepping up to the plate. And I want to thank you so much for doing that and wanting to continue to do that, especially as contentious as DOE can be at times. You know, the challenge that you faced, especially in this last three years, two years, it's been amazing how DOE did their job during a very crucial time that where people were used to do other things other than teach, but provide food. When we were passing out the food through the schools, that was just amazing, how the teachers all got together and even the board was out there. Thank you so much for that. You know, delivering food to those who need it. So I greatly appreciate it and I'm here today to thank you personally for stepping forward. Senator Brown had that one question I had about what have you contributed and I appreciated listening to what you had to say. I think you're in a good position to sit on this chair because of your background. I believe you're still employed with Manjelu, right?
Yes.
Right? And it's ironic, we just had a resolution by Senator Ada who talked about the financial literacy, you know, and that's actually part of your, your mission statement.
Yes.
And that it just fits hand in hand, you know? So you're already on track. So this is the person that will, right, that'll lead it, you know, for this resolution to come out. So we know that we got someone who can lead that agenda there. But Ms. Borja, one thing I really appreciate, and I'm sure many parents, as well as even students, like to go to the website for DOE and review the website. It's important to me to have that website up and running at all times and updated daily so they can get all the information they need. DOE has been pretty good at that, but unfortunately, there's some things that are missing when it comes to the board. I'm only seeing the agenda for the board minutes for 2021 and I believe we're still missing 2020 in there, but it's only two years. So I'm hoping that there's a link, maybe I'm missing it and I don't see it. Sometimes websites don't, are not very friendly. You have to do a forensic just to try and find where the link is. But it's very important, I think, you know, even as a board member yourself, that, you know, maybe you can keep on top of that amongst the other hundreds of things that you have planned. But I appreciate that. I just don't see the last two years. Only FY, yeah. I'm only seeing 22 and 21. I don't see 20. And it, maybe I'm just missing something. Go back to the top, it says go back to the top, but I don't see it. I'll get with someone if I'm missing something here. If not, but please, that website is so important, user-friendly for our parents to understand what's going on. And hopefully, like you said earlier, getting parents involved is one of the biggest challenges. And once they're able to educate themselves on what's going on, I think they may show up. So get that website going. Thank you again, Ms. Borja. I wish you the very best and always know that my door is open if I could be of any assistance to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you as well, Senator Titegui.
You're welcome. Yes, Mrs. Gutierrez?
Senator Tallo, I will make sure, because for me too, as a board member, I always go back to the minutes that's posted there. But I know that I brought that concern up to John Fernandez, so I'm sure, but we do have the minutes available. So I just want to, I'll ask Mr. Activitain Santos to make sure that our staff really check into that because for me, I do go out back to refresh what, you know, I'm called the historian on the board, but I wanted to, because I recall, you know, I'm not on, not on that older age, but I do remember and I just want to make sure that before I really put it out, that it's really true. So I will have that follow-up, Senator Tallo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gutierrez, for the reassurance. No, I want to thank the members of the board for giving up, you know, a lot of their free time and serving our students and our community. And Ms. Borja, it's a real joy to see you back here again. I'm glad and I'm so grateful that you accepted this nomination. I remember three years ago, this is, you know, you were here and you're excited and eager to get to do the work. And now, three years later, you come and you've done, you know, your strategic planning, addressing the parents' situation within our schools, and also going out to the community, giving a lot of your free time to ensuring student success. And so I really appreciate the work that you've done. I feel that you've come a long way and you've been a tremendous help to the board and a rejuvenated spirit also. And so I support your nomination and we look forward to confirming you this session. We had a budget session, so we weren't able to make movement, but we will be confirming you at the end of September. So just thank you so very much for the amazing work that you have done. We're really grateful for it. Thank you. Okay, and that concludes our agenda. We have exhausted all of our items. It is now 5:54 in the afternoon. Testimonies will be, will be accepted for the next 10 business days and it can be emailed to senator TC Nelson at GuamLegislature.org. So thank you very much. You guys have a good evening and God bless.